Call this meeting to order, please. Hello. Oh, now it's working. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Announcements. The Third Annual Merrimack Rocks Event will be held on Saturday, September 26th, at the Pavilion at Watson Park, beginning at 4:00 PM and concluding with fireworks show at 8:00 PM. Merrimack Rocks is an evening of live music, attractions, fireworks, and a tribute to celebrate Merrimack and Merrimack citizens, past and present. There are two regular council meeting schedule. One is for Thursday, October 8th, 7:00 PM in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room, and the second one is Thursday, October 22nd, again, 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Merrimack Police Department Drug Takeback is this Saturday, September 26th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM at the police station. Anonymous drop-offs of unwanted or unused prescription medications can be properly disposed of right in the lobby. If you cannot make it on Saturday, 26th, the drop box is in the police lobby at any time. Fire Department wants to remind everyone that as part of the Observance for Fire Prevention Week, they will conduct their annual open house on Wednesday evening, October 7th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Merrimack Central Fire Station located at 432 Daniel Webster Hospital, Daniel Webster Highway. The open house is the department's way of showing the citizens who they are and what they do, as well as demonstrating their emergency capabilities, equipment, apparatus, station, and personnel. This has become an event enjoyed by many Merrimack families, and the normal attendance is between 400 and 500 visitors. Parking can occur at Watson Park or the CVS parking lot. For further details, please contact the Town Manager's Office at (603) 424-7075. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I forget, I just want to make a note that Dan Dwyer, Councilor Dwyer, and Town Manager Eileen Cabanel are excused for this evening's meeting. Okay, comments from the press are public. Seeing nothing. Let's start with recognitions, resignations, and retirements. First is recognition of the retirement of town employee. And I'm gonna move the floor over to Councilor Rothaus to do the first one. Go right ahead.
Thank you. If the Chief and Joey could come up to the mic over here, I'd appreciate it. Back seventeen years ago, I had been reminded this evening that I actually had the opportunity and privilege to swear Joey in as an officer on our department. Joe had actually started four or five years before as a special and came on board and through the miracle of the retirement system is able to do something his sister, my wife, has been dying to do for a couple of years now. But I'm gonna have the Chief speak about Joe and then we'll have something presented.
Thank you, Councilor Rothaus. Good evening, everyone. Today, we're really here to recognize exemplary service for just over twenty-three years of committed, dedicated, loyal service that Joe Goodrich has given to the town of Merrimack and the Merrimack community. Joe became a certified part-time police officer back in 1993. And as you just heard, in 1998, he was sworn in as a full-time officer by then Selectman Rothaus. He attended the 117th Police Academy and graduated with the highest level of physical fitness award. That was in 1999. Police Officer of the Year in 2003. Became a detective in 2007. Promoted to Patrol Sergeant in 2008. Has literally over thousands of hours of in-service training, including leadership, management, legal, tactical, Homeland Security, and FBI-related narcotics investigative training. Has an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, and a master's degree in Criminal Justice Administration. He's volunteered at Kids Co. at the rebuilding project. I think I still have the blisters from that myself. He's volunteered with the NIA. Volunteered as a mentor with the RSEC Academy. Joe will leave a huge void when he retires within the Merrimack Police Department, as well as the community, a void that will be difficult to fill in terms of his experience in community service, expertise in investigations, and his street cop mentality. And for those of you that know and have worked with Joe, you know exactly what I'm talking about. As well as his leadership by example, Joe is really has been and always will be, as far as I'm concerned, the epitome of leadership as far as our first-line supervisors go in our police department. Joey has been involved in a number of things. Armed robbery suspect pursued from Nashua. Armed and barricaded subjects, armed suicidal subjects and individuals. He was also involved in detention of a foreign national. This was way back shortly after 9/11 attacks, when a top-ten suspect wanted by the Department of Homeland Security, was stopped and detained by then Officer Goodrich. He's been involved in locating missing persons throughout the town, one most recently over Horse Hill. And once coordinated as part of our Narcotics Investigation Unit, Operation Clean Sweep, netting eleven suspects involved in the illicit sale and distribution of cocaine, heroin, and marijuana in our community. And he's arrested numerous of impregnable burglary suspects. And oh, did I forget, he was wrestling champ in high school in 1989. I think he's got just about every award and commendation conferred upon him, except for the Medal of Freedom, and I'm sure that's surely coming from the President at some point. Joe's had an exemplary career. And we don't have time tonight to really dig into exactly all the things that Joe has been recommended for, commended for, or letters in his file from citizens that have given us the heads-up on all the good work that Joey has done over the years of his service to the community. And Joey and I have been through a lot together, quite a bit, much of which I won't get into, but suffice it to say that I wouldn't want to have gone through half of that without anybody else by my side. Joey, on behalf of everybody at the Merrimack Police Department family, just thank you very, very much for your service, your loyalty, and certainly, most of all, your friendship.
Thank you. It's humbling to hear all those nice things they said about me. He doesn't say about the things when I screwed up, so that's good. I want to start and thank Chief Devine. He's the guy that had the faith in me and hired me right out of the gate. Chief Mulligan treated me like a father. I wanted to, I promised the captain I wouldn't cry, but he took me to all the golf tournaments and he really was a really good guy to me and meant a lot to me. After Chief Mulligan left, Chief Mulligan, same respect, treated me like a father. I grew up in town and part of becoming a police officer, you gotta stay out of trouble. And my mom and my family had a lot to do with that. So I'd like to thank them. I said I wasn't gonna cry. Chief Doyle, I can't tell you how much I've learned from you. Pete Albert, Dean Kilkelly, all the lieutenants, Paul Poirier. We'd ride around together and we were just going to get a coffee and would end up in a felony arrest. I don't know how it happened, but it happened. I've learned a great deal from everybody here. All the patrolmen, sergeants. You guys are like family. I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
All right. Presented to Sergeant Joseph R. Goodrich upon the occasion of your retirement from the Town of Merrimack Police Department in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than seventeen years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the town. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, June 28th, 1998, through September 30th, 2015, presented by the Town Council and the Town Manager this 24th day of September, 2015.
Thank you.
And if you think seventeen was, seventeen years was long, wait to hear the next one. The Town Council will present a recognition award, which is this rocking chair over here. Why do they have rocking chairs? Anyway.
I told my guys no furniture when I retired.
Award to Judith A. York in recognition of her retirement from Merrimack Police Department with more than thirty years of full-time service.
She really doesn't want to leave.
Thank you, Councilor Harrington. Judy, as you heard, has performed over thirty years of dedicated service to the Merrimack community. And the running joke between Judy and I, I say joke, the running story between Judy and I, is she got hired shortly before I did, so we were always trying to beat each other to the finish line when it came to retirement, but congratulations, Judy, you beat me to the finish line. Judy started in January of 1985, when she was hired as a full-time secretary, a legal secretary at the police department for a prosecutor at the time. She has been regularly involved in, for the last thirty years, preparing court cases, subpoenaing witnesses, scheduling cases for court, preparing witnesses, discovering material for defense attorneys, and working tirelessly for everybody as prosecutor, including myself, for the few years that I did it when I was in the Prosecution Division. And I think we had a lot of fun when we were doing it. There was a lot of anxiety because court was a little bit different back then. We've enjoyed actually throwing her under the bus regularly for all of the court cases that we screw up. We always blame Judy, so much so that the judge actually ordered us to bring Judy over once to find out if this Judy person really existed. We consider her the great white in the shark tank. When it comes to the shark tank, we all have some little hesitation walking through the Records Division at any point during the day because of the lively and spirited chatter that goes on inside the Records Division. She has a breadth of institutional knowledge of the department. She's really an encyclopedia of sorts when it comes to the things that she can remember and the events that she can recall. And she's actually a very adept and accomplished writer, as I understand. She's a very good poet. Someday, we can probably all sit back and read a book that Judy will write now that she's in her retirement years. She volunteers her time regularly to special events involving our officers who are working in the community. She was a huge help back a few years ago when we were in transition for our office manager's position. Judy stepped right up and helped us get through a very difficult and trying time. She's the union president of the NEPBA Local 112. And most importantly, she shares my affinity for decorating at the holidays and helps out religiously at our annual holiday food drive at the police department. Judy will be missed mostly because of her, quote, "dynamic, engaging, and spirited personality."
In other words?
Oh, I wasn't going to say that. On behalf of everybody, your Merrimack PD family, Judy, thank you so much for your service and your dedication and your friendship over the last thirty years with us. You and your candy drawer are going to be sorely missed. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's been a very interesting thirty years. I've enjoyed it tremendously. Made great friends. I've enjoyed working with everybody and ups and downs, but mostly ups. And I've worked with everybody that's here and many more than aren't. But it's been wonderful and prosecutors, we went through them like crazy and it has been fun. I've enjoyed it so much and thank you all so much.
Obviously, I have to lift this up. Just one quick comment from the council, but really from the citizens of Merrimack. Officer Goodrich and the illustrious Judy. The citizens of Merrimack want to thank you for your combined forty-seven years of service to this town. We appreciate and we respect all of the officers, all of the firemen, all of the town employees. But I think it has to be said on occasion. So thank you for your service to this community.
You have a lot to help here.
I do.
There's better places to put a rocking chair.
We have one more recognition, but he is not present. So I'm going to do a little reading myself. This is the Town Council will present a recognition award to Ronald M. Bergeron in recognition of his retirement from the Merrimack Public Works Department with more than thirty-five years of full-time service. Yeah, he's right. Let me read this from Rick Seymour. Ron's thirty-five-year career with the Town of Merrimack began in September, 1980. It will come to a close on Wednesday, September 30th, when he makes his next most memorable move, retirement. For thirty-five years, Ron successfully fulfilled his role as a mechanic for the Town of Merrimack. Ron saw a great change throughout his career. He worked for many years on police department vehicles, working on changeovers. He worked on installing light bars, two-way radios, and emergency lighting on town vehicles. And most recently, his focus was working on fire vehicles and updating and maintaining the maintenance records. He managed difficult tasks and obstacles and was able to solve problems effectively. This is a new world of leisure awaiting you, Ron. We hope you achieve more of your dreams. Enjoy your retirement. So we will make sure that his rocking chair is delivered to him at home. And thank you all for coming and have the best regards to these two wonderful people. Now, if you want to leave, now's a good time. We're gonna take a five-minute recess? Hello. Hello, I'd like to start the meeting again, please. Okay, to continue, that was nice. Okay, appointments, there are none, public hearing related to the proposed changes to Chapter 183 Vehicles and Traffic. Chief Doyle, would you like to come join us? The Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the proposed changes to Chapter 183 Vehicles and Traffic of the Town Code to add a section restricting through traffic on Valley View Drive to emergency vehicles only between tax map parcel 5C/142 and 5C/148, pursuant to Charter Article 5, Section 5-3. Chief Doyle, so are you, are yours?
Good evening, Chairman Harrington and members of the council. Thank you for having me back for the second reading and the public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance addition to Chapter 183. Right now, the only amendment we made since the previous meeting that we had was the definition portion of that particular ordinance. And the reason we did this in conjunction with Kyle Fox and Tim Thompson was actually, and it wasn't so much at the behest of Councilor Kane, we had that discussion about snowplows and emergency vehicles and whatnot. As we dug deeper into it, we found that our emergency vehicles per statute, RSA 259-29-28, are only emergency vehicles when they're actively engaged in responding to a bona fide emergency. This would preclude police cars from normal directed patrols, maintenance vehicles in the Public Works Department, and snowplows removing snow that wouldn't otherwise be affixed with an emergency light, for example. So what we needed to do was look at including in the definition of authorized, because the signage right now reads authorized and emergency vehicles only, to include a definition that's specific to authorized vehicles. And what we did is we added that as part of the amended portion of this particular definition. So for this purpose, or for the purpose of this ordinance, quote, "authorized vehicles," unquote, are defined as vehicles owned by the Town of Merrimack and includes, but is not limited to, those of the Merrimack Police, Merrimack Fire Rescue, and Public Works Departments. Emergency vehicles are defined as such under RSA 259-28, which was previously stated in the original draft that we provided to you. That was the only change that we had made between the time that we met last time at the previous council meeting where this was first discussed and the hearing tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Why don't we open the public hearing at 7:31? Have to wait at least a minute. Okay, Bill, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in the possession of an email dated September 22nd, 2015, at 8:28 PM. All of you have a copy of the email that I received from, in Abutter and Valley View Drive. And Becky Thompson was copied, carbon copied on the communication. I'd like to read it into the record without any objection.
No objection.
Thank you. The email is addressed Valley View Drive and is addressed, Dear Bill. I'm writing because at this point, it appears that I will not be able to attend the council meeting on Thursday, September 24th. My husband's school is having open house that evening, and since he needs to be there as one of the teachers, I will need to stay home with our children. Please explain to the council members that my absence in no way reflects a lack of interest in the issue regarding the emergency access road portion of Valley View Drive. Between my husband and myself, we have been to every meeting, parentheses, Planning Board and Council, close parentheses, pertaining to this issue to date. The meeting on the 24th will be the first one neither of us can attend. Though I feel badly that one of us won't be there to speak during the public hearing segment of the evening, I have peace knowing that I've already shared my concerns and hopes when I was at the last council meeting. In summary, we desire to see the police department empowered and supported in enforcing the "emergency vehicles only" designation, in quotations, because we consider any and all through traffic to be a severe danger, parentheses, to our children and to our neighbors, close parentheses. Thank you in advance for sharing this email on our behalf during the public hearing portion of the Valley View discussion and for all of you and the other council members due to protect Merrimack residents. I appreciate the time, effort, and consideration you all put into making decisions with our best interests in mind. I look forward to hearing back from you sincerely, Shawna Amick, 11 Valley View Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire, 03054. And I responded in kind that I would, after consulting with you and copying Eileen on our conversation, that I would be reading it into the record. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any other public comment? Okay, yes, go right ahead. Just name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hammond. 18 Valley View Drive, which is in Abutter to the access road as well. So my wife and I wanted to come here and add our position that we agree with and promote the restriction of the access road to emergency vehicles only. And I think many of you already know that the amount of traffic that has been on that road up till now has been, I'll say, amazing, even with these signs there. So one of our concerns is how do we enforce that? Just to have it remain as access to emergency vehicles only. My wife and I would love to have a gate, but I know that's not part of the hearing tonight. But that's one of our major concerns and we are for restricting that to emergency vehicles only. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, I'll close this hearing at 7:34. Council members, comments. Jody?
Just wanted to thank Tom for the catch on the language. So I think the changes are needed and appropriate and are valuable, so thank you to Tom. Referencing the comment regarding the gate. I wondered why we couldn't have a gate and had a conversation with Bill, actually, a week or so ago. And it's because of the class of road, a gate is not allowed. So, because I would think that would be an option that we could discuss, but it's not on the table because of the class of road, we couldn't put a gate up there. So just so that people know that, that we have discussed it and thought about it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, move the proposed changes to Chapter 183 under Vehicles and Traffic to the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mayhem.
That would be at our next meeting.
On October 8th, correct.
Okay, we're all set to vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, 600. Move to Consent Agenda on October 8th.
And for the people in the audience, do you want to explain to them what the Consent Agenda?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Long and short of it, a consent agenda is, there's no objection with the council. It does require final approval. We basically move the consent agenda, it gets voted up or down. We basically move the consent agenda, it gets voted up or down at face value. I've yet to see a consent agenda that's been voted down. So it's just to formalize the process and complete it as succinctly as possible.
It fills in the regulations, the law.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Now that you're leaving, you will. Now that you're leaving, you will. Have a good evening. Okay, any legislative updates from state reps? I see none in the audience. Town manager report, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. A household hazarded waste collection will be held on Saturday, October 3, at the Nashville Public Works Garage at 9 Stadium Drive from 8:00 AM to noon. For a list of acceptable materials, please check out the solid waste division on the town's website. There is a fee of $10, which covers 10 gallons or 20 pounds of hazardous material. The Parks and Rec Department will be holding the annual American Red Cross Community Blood Drive on Thursday, October 1, from 2 to 7 PM in the function hall at Wasserman Park. Those who are interested in donating blood should call the Parks and Rec Department at 882-1046 to schedule an appointment, or you can just show up between those hours. The Friends of the Library Group purchased a little free library, and through a partnership with Merrimack Parks and Recreation, it's found a new home at the playground at Wasserman Park. Thanks to the Merrimack Department of Public Works for installing it, this is a collaboration at its best. Our hope is that other groups or individuals will want to sponsor a little free library at their business to provide even more free and accessible reading materials throughout the community. Little free libraries are stocked with a variety of books, and folks are welcome to take a book or leave a book, thus making the Little Free Library Collection community-driven and sustainable. For more information, please call the library director, Avet Crozier. Thank you.
Yeah, swashbuckling, no. Okay, consent agenda, there is none. Old business, believe it or not, there is none. New business, are you taking care of this, Paul? Okay.
I'm good to go.
Request for acceptance of donated funds submitted by Parks and Recreation Director Matt Casparius, but Paul's taking care of it. Town council to consider the acceptance of a donation from Eagle Scout Justin Kaludi.
Pudi.
Kaludi, I was close. In the amount of $246.96 for the Parks and Rec Department and Wasserman Park pursuant to Charter Article 8-15 and RSA 31,95-B. Paul?
Justin was the Eagle Scout who came, that was doing the canoe slash boat rack down at Wasserman Park. And I don't know if any of you have been down there to see it. Justin did a great job. It's done. He did an excellent job fundraising. He received about $250 more than he needed. So he wants to give it back to Wasserman Park so that if these need to be repaired in the future, or something else in that area needs to be repaired, there's some money to be used.
Very nice. Nice gesture. Okay, any discussion, it's a chain of motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept with gratitude a donation from Eagle Scout Justin Kaludi in the amount of $246.96 for the Parks and Recreation Department in Wasserman Park pursuant to Charter Article 8-15 and RSA 31,95-B. And furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any or all documents related to accepting the funds.
And may I suggest, and send a thank you note?
And a big thank you note, and congratulations to Eagle Scout Justin Kaludi for, again, making your beach a little bit better than what it was before.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second.
Second.
I have a finger in the voice, the voice wins. Second by Tom Mayhem. Go speak up. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, none, six, zero, zero. Actually, I'd both raised your fingers, I would interrupt. Okay, next, on the new business Pearson Road Sewerage Pump Station Status Update. Mr. Taylor, come on, join us. Town council will be updated and presented with the details of the Pearson Road Sewer Pump Station project. We're all ears.
Okay, good evening.
Jim, just let me give you a little, then a little. Jim's been working on this project with Director Seymour with DPW in Bedford. I'd have to say on the better part of eight months now. They have had several meetings with the town of Bedford over the Pearson Road Pump Station and the problems that are occurring out there. Even so, they were so nice to include me in one of those meetings with Bedford. And we came up with a solution that Jim is going to talk to you about and give you a heads up and discuss what's going on out there at the Pearson Road Pump Station.
So my understanding is this is informational?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. The Pearson Road Sewer Pump Station, to give you some background, serves 223 homes in the town of Bedford and 24 homes in Merrimack on Grapevine Drive. So the difference between the two is that the homes in Bedford have individual pump systems, and it's connected through a series of pipes called force mains, which is then pumped over to the Merrimack Pearson Road Pump Station. On Grapevine Drive, it's a gravity sewer that serves, so there are no pumps, just a series of sewer pipes connected and flows downhill by gravity right to the pump station. Over time, the wastewater from Bedford has caused significant damage and corrosion to manholes, pipes, concrete structures, basically. And the reason for that is due to hydrogen sulfide gas forms with moisture within the structures, and then that forms a mild sulfuric acid, which over time just heats away at the concrete. So essentially, we met with Bedford, as Paul said. They recognize that they've caused the damage, they're going to fund the entire upgrade of the facility. And the immediate need, I believe that you have a plan that shows the manholes and the pipes to be replaced. I believe that we need to do this before this winter. I'm concerned about the integrity of the structure, that's out in Pearson Road. So we've retained CSSI, which has been low bidder for several projects in Merrimack, very capable contractor. And they will be performing the work out there. We've invoiced Bedford, and as I said, they've agreed to pay for this, and then additional improvements in the next construction season. That's basically it in a nutshell.
With all that work that you've done ahead, it comes out of great, it's small time, but a lot of work.
Yep, it's quite a bit of work there.
Yeah, well, this isn't the only time we've had an issue with this place. It's been going on for what, 10 years?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Yeah, since that whole subdivision, what do you mean? It's been one, I think about four years ago, over something over there.
Yeah, we did require them to do significant upgrades before we accepted it as well, so.
Well, it took, I remember, I actually was sitting on the board of selectmen at the time, and they, the proposal, the presentation was made to allow these forced mains, which is something we don't do in town, or rarely do, if at all. And it took, and then I was gone for a number of years, and I came back in 2006, and it was just a, I think a couple of years later, we finally accepted it from way back in the beginning, when it was built, back in whatever, 96 or whatever. So I did have, I was wondering, is the corrosion happening because it is a forced system, or why is that?
Yeah, and that's the reason we don't allow these type of systems to be built within town. I mean, there are some homes that are connected, but we wouldn't allow like a wholesale development to install this type of system because of that. You know, the wastewater just basically goes septic, and it creates a very bad condition for worker safety as well as the corrosion, so.
And I don't need a lot of knowledge on this subject, but is it because it's sitting in the pipe where ours is just floating away or flowing away?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, thanks. Now I'm a genius.
I don't want details either. But once the, once the corrections are made, how long will that be good for, will happen again?
We monitor that station at least, I mean, we do daily rounds up there, but looking at the structures, we do it annually. And we're due to renew the intermunicipal agreement next year. So we're looking to strengthen some language in there that, you know, certainly give us more language to be able to make sure that there's no issues. What we're looking at now is some better coating systems. There were some put in, but they haven't withstood, you know, the test of time, essentially. Some different pipe material made of, instead of ductel iron composite.
So there'll be modifications to some materials?
Yeah, essentially, right. But we're going to keep a close eye on that, too.
Paul?
And basically, we wanted to come in front of the council, but also the people who take that Pearson Road, to know that there is going to be some construction over the next six, eight weeks dealing with the manhole that's in the middle of the road, as well as bypass pumping. So they're going to see some kind of piping on the side of the road and things of that sort. So that's why we're really trying to get in before the snow and the frost and everything comes in so that we feel that it will be tightened and up beforehand, but we wanted to give everybody what's going on up there.
How long of a project, do you think?
CSSI thinks this part will be maybe seven to 10 days to get it done, which is not too bad.
With luck on our side, yeah.
Yeah, with the lead times of getting the material out there and everything, you know, and people are going to be on the road marking it, and so there's going to be some activity.
Very good. Excellent. Any other questions from the council? Yes, Joe?
One quick clarification. Your letter suggests that they're going to work on items one and two. Is the $90,000 the entire project?
No, that's really, that's really this phase only.
Just for the first couple of items on the list?
Right, I think.
The other items are our responsibility that we have to deal with?
No, it's also Bedford's.
They're going to take care of that as well?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Does that impact our budget at all, or is it?
No, it's like an escrow account. We're getting the money, and it's just gonna, Bedford's paying for the work, and they're giving it to us upfront, so it's just like an escrow account. Like when a plan review occurs in the planning board, it's the same theory behind it. And the reason why we had to break it out into a couple of different things is Bedford's going through their budget process now. So they're trying to get money in for their budget that starts January 1st for the second phase to do this. So that, they agreed to the first $92,000 to get this first portion done. And then the rest will occur in the spring, and that's really off-road, so it's not going to affect the flow of traffic.
Great, thank you.
I'll say. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Jim, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Kinder Morgan proposed Northeast Energy Direct Pipeline Project. Several things to be discussed. I purposely had asked for this to be put on the end of the meeting because we had to make the agenda shortly after they came up with the proposed new route. And we didn't know how lengthy this discussion was going to be. Subsequently, there's more information, which I'll talk about in a minute. So the actual discussion regarding the route, we can have, but I think there's going to be a future time that I'm going to bring up in a minute where we could probably talk in more detail about it. So why don't I just leave that for the moment and talk about the other things? You can turn on the lights. Oh, I don't think we'll need it. Not right now. Sorry. Okay, okay. What you're saying is we did have the NRPC, the National Regional Planning Commission, get the coordinates, and what you're saying here, we should have the public look at it. Can Huseyri win on the map? Okay, perfect. That is the most recent map that we have received, and it's more accurate than the previous one received, because this is based on the coordinates that we received from Kinder Morgan. And it is fairly significantly different in the sense that it goes down Continental, then veers away from the school a bit, then goes into the Fidelity property right beside their parking lot, or building. Goes across near the outlet mall, goes over the hill, and then again goes over to Whittier, and then over underneath. I have had a recent conversation today with Luke Myers, who was our contact from Kinder Morgan. And I had previously had two other conversations with Mike Lennon, who was the property agent, or I think that was his title. And we had talked about having Kinder Morgan come in, and this was prior to the new route, but to talk about the previous route. And told him that he should have put it through an agenda request, and I would look at the agendas, not make it too heavy, and I've received nothing. So today I talked to Lucas Meyer, and he said, oh yeah, they're still interested in coming forward. So we talked about how we would have a discussion about our concerns related to this most recent route. I said, there's going to be documentation like we did anyway. With all the previous routes, we always highlighted the areas of concern and the like. So my question to the council is this. I told them I'd present the question to the council, and I'd get your pleasure. We could either, and I'll call him back with the answer. We can either arrange for him to come to a town council meeting, where we can have an agenda item, or we can have a separate meeting as a workshop with them. What's the pleasure of the council? Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I think we should do the work session.
A separate?
Focus, totally focused on that issue. Not have to worry about any other pressures for that evening on an agenda. And, you know, we can prepare our materials and whatever for that, for just that meeting, and not have to worry about trying to coordinate with other things. And I think it would be more helpful that way anyway, because then, you know, there, we would be trying to push for some, you know, to keep things moving because of the rest of the agenda. Not that we wouldn't want to keep things moving in any event, but you understand imperative sometimes that you have with a meeting, so. I think that's, from my perspective, I think that's a better way to deal with it. We can focus on that one issue, it's the only topic for the evening. And we take care of whatever discussion we have to have with them at that time.
How does that feel, Bill?
I agree. I don't want them looking at their watches during a regular council meeting. You know, they're coming here, they know we're going to be talking about this, and they are with us for the length of time that we need to have them here, and for the community to be able to hear what they have to say and ask their questions along with the council's questions. I echo Councilman Aaron's comments.
Okay, it'll be us. Do I have a consensus that they?
Do you need a motion?
No.
Okay.
So I will contact Lucas tomorrow, and we'll set a date. He did mention that regardless, he'd need a little bit of time to be able to get the people together. So do I have the liberty on choosing a date, or is there something I should stay away from Tuesdays? I'm looking for a?
First and third is usually the planning board on Tuesday.
Looking, no.
But you can work on the schedule with Town Hall. I would think Becky would know the schedule.
Okay, so just leave it up to me? Okay.
It's up to you, yeah.
Okay.
The question, the concern that I would bring to your attention is scoping period ends on October 16, and I would think that we would want to schedule it well before the 16th. So if there was anything that reared its ugly head at the last minute, at least as a board, excuse me, as a council, we would be able to try and position any new information in such way that we can fire off a response to FERC.
Has this actually been submitted?
Not yet.
So we can't respond to scoping when it hasn't been submitted yet, right?
That's technically correct.
What did they send in Friday? There was something that was sent out today. That Eileen sent to us today.
I don't think this has been submitted. This has been, this is the proposed route that they're going to submit when they submit their next major.
Resource.
Resource report, whatever resource report number they're on.
Ten.
Ten, so they're going to, this is part of that with the alternative.
I think the, I think that submission that we saw today was for the original alternative, the three alternatives for, that they had presented to Town Hall.
Wasn't that their response to the delegation's questions?
Yeah, to some extent, yeah.
Right, well, it was their version of a response, but it was, that's what it spoke to, I thought. I tried to read them all.
I know, it's impossible.
But that's a good question, though, that Bill brings up. I imagine even though they haven't filed this route with FERC, that doesn't prevent us from commenting on it. But that's a really good question that Bill poses, because, so, I mean.
Is October 16, that's the day of the last meeting?
The comment, no, and.
This is what we got?
And the comment period is extended to what?
October 16.
October 16.
It is October 16.
Yeah, I told someone today it was the 15th, but Bill's right, it's the 16th. But that doesn't preclude them from submitting things after October 16th, but then we won't be able to comment.
Correct.
Correct.
No, no, we can comment, but they don't need to respond in their resource report. Isn't that the way it works?
That's correct.
That's correct.
We can comment, and they will still read it.
So nothing changes, basically?
No, they're not required to, they're not required to respond to the comments.
Okay.
Right.
Which they're not responding to the comments, anyway, so, okay.
That's elegant.
But, but we can still file a comment after the 16th?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Based on, based on what they told, when I, when I had discussions with them at the open house, okay, and what they said at the meeting with Amherst, and what they have said to other members of the, of the council and to the town, it's not likely that this will be submitted until they make their final submission to FERC.
And we don't have a timeline on that.
And then when they make the final submission to FERC, FERC issues a timeline for their comment periods and meetings and hearings and everything for the final, for the final application.
So they volunteered this map to us. I'm assuming if the route changes again, they'll voluntarily share that map with us again as well. I'm assuming.
If you believe, if you have trust in assuming.
No, no.
No, but I, I will say that, having talked to them at the open house, that they presented this as a map that they appreciated, they loved, they thought it was the best thing in the world. But they also said there are tweaks and adjustments that they want to make. Well, I kind of chuckled at them going up across the hill behind the outlet mall, because that's all granite, and they're talking about a massive expense. Well, we'll just move it and adjust it. And so they're still planning to do some other adjustments and tweaks to that, in my opinion.
Okay.
And I have no reason to believe, from talking to them, that they would not be sharing that with us. They want us to be aware of what's going forward.
Therefore, they wanted to talk to us.
And that's why they're not talking to us.
Paul, you want to say something?
Yeah, and Eileen's had conversations with them also. They've been in talks with DOT, New Hampshire DOT, which is one of the alternatives to what Tom was saying about the granite blasting and things of that sort. So they are still talking with the state and DOT, because they, of the access point, they got one access point coming across the highway on the other side of the outlet mall. And as you notice, all their maps always came across that one access. They're looking at maybe south, moving it, or going someplace other, and follow the highway someplace else for their access point to come across the highway. So they're in discussions with DOT, and DOT has made that clear to Eileen, that they have been having discussions with Kinder Morgan.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
And I'm not sure that this is, anyway. I understand, too, that because both Tom Mahon and Tom Kanek went to the open house and did a wonderful job reiterating their conversations and sharing it with the rest of the council. I understand that Tim Tenney, the chairman of the Conservation Commission, was there as well, and he shared his thoughts. And my understanding, too, is that the Water District was represented by Ron Miner and Lon Woods that evening as well. My concern is that this route continues to ignore the wellhead area. And Tom, you had indicated that, I can't remember if it was Ron or Lon, that spoke to Kinder Morgan, and I pointed out to them again that they're ignoring the wellheads. And I got the impression that there was going to be some follow-up discussion or some follow-up by the Water District with Kinder Morgan after that evening. Do we know any more about any conversations at the Water, because to me, that's just such a key pivotal point. So I don't know, maybe we could have, I don't know, Eileen follow-up or somebody follow-up with the Water District and ask if they connected?
We can, we can always do that. I, I don't know, I didn't get that impression, that there would be some, they were just having a hard time talking to them, I gathered, based on the body language and...
Who was having a hard time?
Woods, Lon, and Ron were having a hard time.
With the KM people?
With KM people, yeah. Actually, it was TGP, but they all had the blue TGP shirts on. But talking to them about those particular issues, and, you know, it was like, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it, you know.
Now, remember, the MVD did write that. Very well-written.
No, I know, I know.
And so, they've done...
But this, these routes clearly ignore all of that.
I understand. No, it does. But the route change have not, the Aquifer site is not different between the routes, the Amherst routes.
Right, right, not right.
So those, that, longer than I expected, documentation from MVD that we submitted is the same, whether it be the older route or this route, same concern?
Right, no, I know that, yeah, yeah. No, I just, every time they issue a new route, they still go through the...
Well, they don't have, as I said...
They still have to respond, remember? Because it was submitted, and they have to be able, the next resource report, they have to have responded to that, because we did submit it. That's why we're in such a rush.
Yep, okay.
I'm sorry.
Now, as I, as I said in my note, they are very unaware of some of the conditions on the ground.
Well, just let me take that, let me take this, just to be able to say, Eileen is working on contacting...
People accuse me of being diplomatic.
Contacting all the businesses directly on the route. Literally, all the companies that are on the route. She has directly contacted them, making them aware of what the new route is. So, and that's what our responsibility is, to make them aware. And if they have, they'll probably listen to them before they'll listen to us. Anyway, it's important for the public to know that she has contacted every single one of them. So, and what they do with that is certainly their concern, but it will help them anyway. Okay, so I will arrange a work session. And that's when we'll probably start examining these maps with the public in more detail. In the meantime, we need to be thinking about identifying those specific concerns. So when they come, we'll have that all prepared, right?
Once you set a date for the workshop, would it be appropriate to invite the impacted businesses of this new pipeline to that workshop?
That's a wonderful suggestion. In fact, I did speak with Chris Ortega today, and told him that a decision was going to be made this evening, and that I would let him know as well, because there should be a representative from the school here as well. Okay, businesses?
And the Village District.
Yeah, just, well, just to expound just a little bit, the town council shared these maps with the school district. So the school district has been kept up to date with whatever information that we know. So if anybody's wondering, thank you.
Correct. And so they should be made aware of the date, whatever it is. Businesses, MVD, any other suggestions? I think that pretty much, neighborhoods, well, it's going to be public.
Conservation, Conservation Commission should know, too.
Yep.
The last I knew, we had not heard back as a Conservation Commission from Kinder Morgan regarding an invitation to come to one of our meetings as well. And another thing I found out, that I was not aware of, when I talked about the mitigation letter that they sent to the Conservation Commission, they sent that mitigation letter to all the Conservation Commissions in all the affected towns. So it wasn't just Merrimack.
Okay.
Penet Chuck? Do we include Penet Chuck?
Penet Chuck has been notified, as far as...
Okay.
They claim to have been notified.
Yeah, yeah. And the mayor has been notified. Yes, Paul?
Back to your point about the Conservation Commissions, doesn't look like they'll be meeting anytime soon. There's been some severe pushback with some of the Conservation Commissions in the western part of the state about the mitigation. So there seems to be some pushback, and it doesn't seem that Kinder Morgan's going to be anytime soon coming and talking to Conservation Commissions.
It's, it's a very difficult issue, because you don't want people to think that you're accepting...
Exactly.
You know, what people are calling blood money. You don't want people to think that you're accepting that. But it's like, at the same time, how do you protect, so if, if they were to put money in the ARM, the ARM fund, and it just goes to a state project, then Merrimack, again, you know, we have this pipeline, and we've gotten nothing from the mitigation fund. So it's, it's a difficult subject for Conservation Commissions to deal with. And I don't think anybody really knows the appropriate way to respond to something like that, but to make it clear to everyone, including Kinder Morgan, that they're not in support of the pipeline. But I believe that the Merrimack Conservation Commission will be discussing projects in the event that mitigation, this pipeline comes to fruition, and in the event that mitigation funds are paid. And another question I asked, because I'm, I'm new to all of this about process, was when, you know, who is the one that's responsible for identifying mitigation and requiring the funds to come forward? It's the Department of Environmental Services. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom. So it's DES. And that when this happens is when Kinder Morgan would file, or TGB would file their, their wetland permits. So there's an actual point, you know, on the, on the timeline, that when they file for their wetland permits, that's when the DES would address any mitigation. So it wouldn't be like FERC would say, okay, you pay Merrimack, or Merrimack would say, okay, now you pay us. None, that wouldn't be the case. So it's all, depends on the state group, right?
But it's great to have the mitigation wishes prior to that point.
You stand a far better chance, from what I understand, of being granted funds from the DES, if you have projects identified and ready to go. Yes.
Because they usually, they usually have come to us, and the one that comes to mind immediately is the Manchester Street Bridge reconstruction. And they came to us and with the, with the City of Nashua, to ask us about those particular issues. And we said, oh, yeah, we'd like to have, we have just a place for the mitigation, and that's out in Greater Woods. And they rebuilt the Red Maple Trail with that. So, you know, we've, Tim and I talked about this before they came to that public meeting we had. And we both went to them afterwards, the property guy, Jim, I forget his last name, Hartman, and said to him, we don't want you to contribute to the ARM fund. Our preference is that you do not do that. Is that we will identify projects that this can be used for, and, you know, if there's mitigation involved, we would, you know...
Benefit the town.
We want that to benefit the town, rather than sending it off to, to Environmental Services for them to scatter around the state.
Okay, and just to let everybody know, we have heard nothing about the agreement, access agreement. Silence.
Well, based on, based on this map, it's unnecessary.
That's correct.
Exactly. But they, you know, yeah.
That is correct.
No, I understand.
Anecdotally, Chairman Harrington, I did speak with Jim Hartman and Alan For at the open house. And the access agreement came up, but he said that because it's still in negotiations, he couldn't talk to me about it. And I said, well, it's not in negotiations. He says, well, you guys sent me a signed form. I can't sign that, because there's a problem. You changed something in it. And I put in a call to Joanna, and I'm waiting for a response. And my understanding was that that was our final response. And I kind of indicated that without being flat out in front of him. But, so I, I think Jim Hartman is still thinking we have negotiation room there, as we talked about in our timeline, and as I tried to intimate to him, no, we're running out of room.
Well, the attorneys are the ones who are talking to each other.
But, but what's there to negotiate when they dump this on our lap?
Well...
I mean, I, to me, that's kind of a, was, was a throwaway line by Hartman to say that to you.
I think this is a throwaway. I don't know whether they could possibly ever do this, although they keep arguing how much better it is than the other route.
I personally, I personally think it's a red herring. But that's, that's my opinion.
Well, that's, so that's kind of what I was trying to say.
I have a piece of property on Continental.
The Golden District does.
The Golden District does.
But Conservation has a piece, too, out there.
Yeah.
That was given as a donation, so.
Oh, that's true.
I know, we paid for that.
Yeah, well, we paid for it. But we have a piece of conservation property on Continental, so we're going to need the access agreement for them to go through that.
So Alan For seemed to be very interested and concerned, the Vice President of Public Affairs, that we don't have this access agreement signed. And he wanted to know what he could do to solve that. And Jim was telling him, well, I can't sign it, because we'd be legally responsible for, for non-public information if we didn't hold them legally responsible. I said, well, we can't, through public information and right-to-know laws, sign that agreement the way you have it.
Unfortunately, that's what ends up happening, is you're getting, in one week, you're getting three different stories from three different resources. And they're all Kinder Morgan, TGP people. And it's like, do you guys talk to each other? Apparently not.
But that's the point, Madam Chair, is that they're not talking to each other. Obviously, they didn't talk to anybody when they came up with this. I really feel like that they were hanging around in a coffee shop, looking at a map, throwing darts at it. I mean, that's, that's kind of the impression when I look at, when I look at this.
No, they, they looked at our submission of September 4. And when you look at the way they modified the route.
They moved the school.
They went every one of them, boom, this, they're complaining about this. Okay, we'll take care of that.
They definitely indicated that they saw our comments on FERC, and were attempting to respond to them.
Yeah, both of us talked to the guy who said he drew the map.
Well, it didn't affect any of the neighbors. It's still three neighbors.
Actually, Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but your neighborhood was never a part of this, and now it is a part of this.
It was.
Now the corner of your property is part of this.
No, it was on the other side of the, of the, I'm sorry.
It was on Continental.
Okay.
No, the neighborhood was always there. Okay, so, really, that's more informational than anything. The only other thing I do want to make a comment, we, we did receive correspondence from Whittier, asking us to take a more of a stand with them. It's worthy for conversation. My opinion is, I believe we've, we've done that already in the previous reports that we've submitted, when we wrote the neighborhoods by name. And when we respond to this, it'll be again reiterated. So I don't feel that there's a need for an additional documentation. I'm not sure how the rest of the group feels. You all received that? Absolutely.
What, what their request to us entailed, they wanted us to put something in writing, I believe, to say that the town council supported their efforts to move the route away from their neighborhood. They're in negotiations right now, trying to get the route moved away. And they wanted something in writing from the town council, saying that we supported their efforts to move the route away from their neighborhood, I think is what they asked.
Okay. And I still think that's...
I'm sorry, my mic isn't on, is what they asked. But, yeah, they, they wanted something in writing from the town council to say that we supported their efforts and their negotiations to move the route away from their neighborhood, which...
Which I think we already did.
No, and I agree with you. I agree with you. And again, I think the council needs to be careful, because they're moving the route away from their neighborhood could very well impact another neighborhood. And I don't, and I think we've been pretty consistent all along, saying that we're, we're not going to say here, put it here, and sacrifice one neighborhood for another. But I think we specifically did name Whittier and a few other neighborhoods in our last submission. So I'm in agreement with you.
And I think when we submit a response, if we do with this, that'll be reiterated. Because in my opinion, say, and the concerns related to these neighborhoods remain the same. So that's another opportunity for us. I'm not sure how anyone else feels.
I agree. You know, that's, we have to take a broader view on this. The other thing that's going on...
Treat all neighborhoods the same.
The only, the other thing that's going on is, you know, Mr. Murray from Fidelity was very active at the open house, and tracking down Mr. For and, and, and Mr. Hartman and several. Hartman could barely get out of his car before he was all over him, like a cheap suit. I mean, just boom in the parking lot. Wow, Hart, what the heck is this? Who are you? Oh, he's handing him his card.
Now, see, if we did that...
Yeah, it'd be assault. But anyway. So anyway, there, you know, and, and we had met with Fidelity the afternoon of the open house.
Right.
On a phone conference with...
Make sure they...
With Murray in the office, and the legal counsel in Boston, and Murray's boss in Boston, the guy that had all the facilities, responsibility for all the facilities.
They're taking it seriously.
So, and they're, they are, they were scheduled, they had scheduled another phone conference the next day for themselves. And they were trying to set something up with Kinder Morgan to talk to them more directly about the impacts of what they were proposing.
And I think what's going to happen with all the businesses, as they're notified, are going to become much more active, because they see the direct impact to them, too. It's one thing with, you know, with conservation land or neighborhoods, but when it's involved their business, it would make an impact. So, that's...
And they've all been talking to each other.
Right. Now, please, Paul?
There is one more scoping meeting.
Go right ahead, you have the date.
I believe it is the 29th of September. It's at Franklin Pierce College. There's parking for 200 people. So get there early. What I heard today is that Franklin Pierce is in session, which means there's a lot of... What I heard today is that Franklin Pierce is in session, which means there's a lot of kids there. And supposedly, they're going to shut them off at 10 o'clock. That's what the rumor is, 6 to 10, Franklin Pierce College. And it's the last scoping meeting for the area. This, this was brought about because of the compressor station out in the temple, New Ipswich area. However, anybody can attend. Even Massachusetts will be attending this one. So if you want to go, get there early, sign up.
Get a pack.
And get a parking spot, because we do not know at this time where they're going to be busing people in to or from. So, but it's up at Franklin Pierce College.
Thank you for that, remind. Okay, does anyone want to say anything else before opening the public related to the subject? Okay, open a public comment.
James Ferrera, Seven Marion Lane, Meramec, two comments. One, I feel like we're kind of bamboozled by our next-door neighbors in Amherst. And I would ask the New Hampshire Coalition, and Nancy specifically, to look at excommunicating them from the New Hampshire Coalition, because they don't have the best interest of New Hampshire. And I feel it's very unfortunate, and I feel Kinder Morgan finally kind of cracked our armor and started the divide. And obviously, Amherst loves this route, because it doesn't impact them anymore. So I would, I would ask that.
Well, even they, if I remember correctly, when they moved their route, they went from one neighborhood to another too.
That's correct.
So they did that, you know, people came all of a sudden, this neighborhood had none. So they did damage to themselves too.
Right, but not to the extent that we're left with.
Certainly, the amount in their town is a lot less.
Yeah, just because of the.
The bog.
The bog.
Yeah, so I would just ask that, I don't know the likelihood of it, but I think it's worth mentioning. And the second comment, to something that happened at last council between Bill and Dan, in terms of the letter that Bill wanted to write to the Inspector General Office. There is a subcommittee in the Office of Inspector General that would have some legality over the pipeline and FERC hearings. I'm having a tough time, and maybe you guys as council members have better connections than I do, to find out exactly who that letter would need to go to. But there is a department within the Office of Inspector General that would listen and would investigate this. So I thought that would be worth mentioning.
Go ahead, Bill.
And we actually got a response back from the congressional delegation from that specific inspector general that specifically stated that, yep, that's correct, but it would be after the fact, not now, be after the fact.
Okay. After it's approved or after it's.
When the dust is settled.
Okay. That's, that's helpful, huh?
Well, hold on, hold on, before you, before you leave.
Okay, all right.
This whole thing was not initiated by Kinder Morgan. Okay? This, this alternate, alternative routing was not initiated by Kinder Morgan. All right? At least, this particular segment of it, through Amherst, that was initiated by their pipeline task force. They were the one that initiated that. Well.
Well, the task force is headed by the Chair of the Select.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
They've been, they've been very, very nice about.
And there's a Conservation Commission member on that task force too.
Right, and they've been, they've been very, they've been very skillful in making sure that they were behind this all the way, if you will. Okay, so this is, you know, and, you know, they only hint at the number of meetings that they have had with Kinder Morgan to hammer this, this route out over the time between March and July. So it's not, it's not Kinder Morgan cracking things, it's the initiation by.
The task.
The task, the task force for the town of Amherst.
Okay, I appreciate the explanation. One other thing, sorry. In terms of the Northern Pass, it's now been approved, and it looks like it will be green-lighted. Again, I think in our last and final letter to FERC, we should highlight that Northern Pass will completely replace Vermont Yankee Nuclear Power Site, which would give us a ton of surplus of energy in this region. And projected costs and cuts to electric in this region are going to be anywhere from 60 to 70% discounted. So I don't, again, think there's a need for this pipeline. So I just would ask that you might want to include that or look into that. There's a ton of papers on that, thank you.
Thank you, and the reality is, is rumor of course, but this, none of this gas is going to a power plant. So there's not going to have any electrical impact at all.
Well, they did open it up two weeks ago, they're bidding for, now for.
They are, Liberty, Kinder Morgan.
TGP, TGP and Kinder Morgan.
So it's not more, it's a, it's a reality, it's not a rumor?
No, they're, they're, they're asking.
They're asking to submit it.
They're asking for interest in entering into contracts with them to supply generating stations.
Yeah, and I mean, they also bought tons of oil tankers, right? That they're going to connect out of Canada and send this to Europe and South America, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Come right ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Julie Penny, I live at 51 Tinker Road. I have just reviewed the first change, and now, within the time that I reviewed the first change, now apparently we have a second change. As an outsider coming into this, I say outsider, because I'm one of the many people in this town who has clues zero, what's going on. You guys think you're informing people, and there's information out there, it's not reaching anybody. Because as I'm talking to people in town, they don't know what's going on. There are people who don't know that there's a pipeline coming through the town. There's people who have just no idea. And as I'm looking at this, and I'm hearing what you guys are saying, and you're talking about busing people in to talk about meetings and whatnot, you guys are a little used to this, I'm not. This is ridiculous. Talking about this is absolutely ridiculous from my standpoint. I look at a pipeline that, when you look at the map, it starts over here, it wants to go over here, and it goes up here, because the people down here said, no way, this is disgusting, get it out. And now, here it is in my lap. This is absurd. There's no need for it, and now it's coming through down past schools, so they've decided they're not going to do that. So they're going to bump it more into Penachok area. It's just, the whole thing is ridiculous.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Months ago, did you receive a postcard about the pipeline meeting?
I have, I have been on top of it, but as time goes on, people become occupied. So there's nothing, there's signs, but the signs get stolen. So you see a sign here, you see a sign over there, and people move on with their lives. If you're not on Facebook, if you're not on Twitter, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong here.
No, I'm, I'm just curious, I was curious about it.
Yeah, so it's, it, there's a lack of connection with this in this town. There are people who are very animated and very about this, and when I talk to people, they're very on board with it, but people aren't here. And I think that speaks volumes about this little town. Nobody wants it, but I'm sad that nobody's here. I'm sad that I'm here, and I am totally not qualified to be doing what I'm doing right now. I have a little bit of information, I made it my business to find out stuff in the past couple of days, but we're still so very uninformed in this town. And that frightens me. It frightens me that I have a part-time job at Home Depot, I know what they went through to put that building up, because there's an aquifer there. I know how they had to put in concrete, and they had to line it so that aquifer would stay safe. And now we got this big disgusting thing coming down 101A, that's our egress out of town. This is ridiculous, I can't even believe we're talking about this. It needs to go away, it serves no purpose to anybody, except for the people who want to line their pockets with the profits. How do we stop this?
That's what we're trying, that's what we've been trying to do.
I, I, I've been reading letters, I've been going back through the website. I totally appreciate all the letters that I've seen from the board, and, you know, it's, it's refreshing, it's nice. But I feel like it doesn't matter what we say, am I understanding this correctly? That it doesn't matter what we say and what we want?
We're very limited, one, we have no control. All we can do is identify those areas of concern of the route. And be able to talk FERC, who's the federal energy, the ones who are going to approve it, who are really looking at environmental issues, highlighting the environmental issues, especially, most importantly, the aquifer. You're right on the money.
Yeah, and it's going right through, you know, Penachok property, it's going down through, I mean, any of that gets contaminated? And how can you not care? I just, it's troubling.
Bill, we wanted to make a quick comment.
Well, there was something that Julie said that kind of, kind of bothers me. You're a resident of Meramec, you're a taxpayer of Meramec, that makes you intimately qualified to talk about this issue. Doesn't matter whether you've done your homework for five minutes, or five days, or five hours. Those women out there have done yeoman's work. All you have to do is just say, what can I do to help? What can I do to educate, just educate myself so that I can help alleviate some of the burden that they've been doing?
Yeah, I guess I'm embarrassed.
Don't, please, don't say you're not qualified, because you are qualified.
I'm embarrassed as a resident, because I feel like I'm one of those people, those fair-weather people. And I talked to Gino a long time ago, and I said, what can I do, give me a sign? And, you know, then I just went about my, you know, life, and I thought it was all being handled, and obviously, it's not. And yet, you know, I try and make the overture to talk to people, it's, it's a hard place to be. You know, it, it just is. We need more people, it needs to be, I don't know whether this is purposefully a closed-lipped thing, that we don't publicize this in town.
Well, it's.
We don't, you know, I just, I don't, I don't know, and that's why I say I'm new to this.
Part of its society alone.
Yeah.
A lot of people are working day and night with families.
Yeah.
I wasn't politically active in my twenties and early thirties, I wasn't, my life was too busy. I was too busy. But then as you get older, you get more time, or you, or you have something that peaks, then that starts opening the door.
Yeah.
And then you feel like you do, okay, I got to get involved, because if I'm not, I'm just as guilty. Joy?
Thanks. No, Julie?
Yes.
It's nice to meet you, it's nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
She brings up a good point, and I think part of the problem with this is the alternate routes. People are caught, they don't know about the alternate routes. And one thing I was going to say is, well, I'm assuming this map's going to be posted to our website. But I think possibly we can brainstorm an idea, well, when Eileen and I had a conversation too about the businesses, you know, she's hesitant to impose any type of a view of supporting or being against the pipeline, which I understand and I agree with to the businesses in town. But I, my point to her in our conversation was, do they know about this alternate route? Is any, because, and like you said, these ladies out here, and those of us sitting here, we are eating, breathing, and sleeping this right now.
Are you talking about the businesses?
Yes, but, but, but they didn't, a lot of them did not know.
Just got it.
No, I'm saying, the first, the one that was from.
The original.
Yes, yes.
The original route.
So, so it's. I, I think we, we can't assume that people know, or businesses know. And how can we get, how can we, as the Town Council and the Town Government, get information out to people about these alternate routes? And, you know, Finley made a point before too about these people, the people who were on the original route have had months and months and months to research this and talk about it. And it's now there are some people who weren't on the original route. Luckily, I paid attention, even though it didn't personally affect me before now. But most people, it's just human nature, they don't pay attention to things unless they're personally affected. So those people who, and the Tinker Road area and Thornton area needs to pay attention, because you're right in the line of fire for a possible, another change, if Fidelity gets this route moved south. So how do we get information out there about there's a new route, it's possibly going to change, and those of you who weren't affected before and weren't paying attention possibly should be? That, I, I don't know how to do it.
One of the things that's frustrating is that in the beginning, one of the things in the postcard, this will affect the whole town. And that was part of it, we knew that there were going to be modifications.
There's a divide.
I know, Bill, and then Finley, you want to say something?
As far as the suggestion that I would make, is we've tried using our mobile billboards for voting. Why don't we try our mobile billboards for letting them know about pipeline? Pipeline information, meramecnh.gov, or, or the public meeting. I think that's, especially where, I hear what, what Ms. Penny is saying, that, you know, there are some people down that end of the town that are not aware of it. That might be a reasonable and cheap alternative to communicate a message and let people know. So at least it's, I hate to say it, at least it's driving traffic to the website, it's driving traffic to, to the Town Manager's Office for people to learn about more, so that would be one suggestion. But the, the point that I would make about people not paying attention, and I hate to say this, but, you know, we're the eighth largest community in New Hampshire, we have about 27,000 people. In every municipal election, we're barely scraping 2,000 people in elections. But if you have a state election or a federal election, especially a presidential, they, they, you know, they, they're like, I hate to say it, they come out like locusts, it's like swarms. But for, but for a municipal election.
But he said it anyway.
What? I didn't mean to, just saying they swarm in like, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I just, it's the only thing that came to mind. But the point is that nobody, I mean, these people are dedicated, they, they've been here at every meeting. I know all these people, I know they vote, I know they care about what goes on in town. But to get to what Nancy was saying, I mean, to some extent, we're, we're a bedroom commuter, commuter, community, where people live here and travel south to Massachusetts to, you know, 495, you know, Billerica, Chelmsford, Lowell, to, to, to go to work down there. And by the time they're coming home and fighting traffic coming up Route 3 at 6:30, and they want to talk to their kids and have dinner and kind of unwind, they're not making the time to come here at 7 o'clock in the evening to hear what's going on in Town Government, or, dare I say, you know, put on cable access and, and watch, watch it on TV. So I agree with it, it's difficult.
It's very telling, I'm the only person here from my street. You know, that, that says something.
Well, you know, there's a lot of neighborhoods, and look at the representation.
Yeah, but I think the sign boards, and I think that's kind of where I was going with it, is that something that you guys are okay with? Because I think that if you're not connected, you're not, if you're not on Facebook and all that, which is where most of this is happening, people need that visual in their face when they're kind of zoning out while they're driving. Those sign boards would be outstanding, I just don't know if you're willing to do that.
Well, one of the things I would point out, if you listen to Jack Heath in the morning on WGIR 6 AM, Kinder Morgan is now advertising and promoting the pipeline on GIR. And as a part of their promotional advertising, Jack Heath is lobbing them softballs on the benefit of the pipeline. And they're, they're paying for free advertising, prime time, 8 o'clock in the morning, when, when people are more inclined to be listening to news radio, talk radio, as opposed to 6, 7 o'clock in the morning, when we're probably getting ready to go out, go out to work, or get our, get our kids to school, or what have you. So, you know, that, we found out a piece of information regarding a decision at the PUC. We found out because I happened to be listening to it on the radio, and it came as a total, it came as a total shock to me. And lo and behold, there was a staff report that was released that never was put on, or whether it should have been put on the PUC docket is a different story, I don't know. But there was a piece of report, and the, the report, you know, Kinder Morgan was saying, well, you know, the PUC says, you know, we can benefit from, from natural gas, you know, benefiting, you know, generators and creating new, new modes of electricity to, to power the state of New Hampshire. But he didn't bother to tell you that all the data that was used was provided by Kinder Morgan to the state. Or ISO New England, which is the, the larger, larger agency that oversees power in New England, so.
I think we do understand your frustration.
We do.
And magnify it 20 times, and that's what those people feel like.
Yeah, oh, I know, and I, that's, I get it, I do. I just want more people on board, and I think if we can get that information out, but I hope it's enough, so, thank you.
How many people, how many people do we have at our meeting? The, the, the big.
The big meeting?
Yeah. 400, 500?
450 maybe, yeah.
450. 27,000 people, and we only, and now, we packed the place, it looks big.
It's marvelous.
It is marvelous, I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, so.
So thank you for, just stay engaged.
Nice to meet you.
Stay engaged. Did you want to say something, Finley?
I just, it's, it's an age-old problem. We, we act like we're surprised we can't get the information out, but the reality is, it's all the time. So the people who are most severely impacted will be there. People outside of that area, they're concerned, but it's not part of their life. So ultimately, what I think has to happen, and I believe has been happening, is the focus, this is great, people that we can get here, go into the meetings and all those other things, but making sure that we point out, as you've suggested just a little bit ago, the ecological flaws, the aquifer flaws, and.
In terms of our responsibility.
Right, and it, and that's what they're, that's what they'll ultimately hear.
That's what they're listening to.
Right, and so as long as we've been keeping up with that, and I believe we have, and have to continue to do so, that's where it will happen. I don't know how, the signs, that's fine, but I don't know, you know, what that will provoke, to be honest.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what it will provoke either, Finley, I just. I'm not, I'm not sure what it will provoke either, Finley, I just, it, part of it off the top of the head. But I would, but I would say, this new alternate route, all the businesses down in Penachuk Square that are impacted, they knew about the pipeline, they said, "Oh, it's north of us, we don't, we don't have to care about it." And then they wake up one morning, and then they find out that, you know, because they've been asleep at the switch for the last four months, now all of a sudden, they have to deal with it. And now they have to scramble and rely on people like us, who have been doing the homework for the last four to five months, to get perspective as to what they can be doing.
Go right ahead, Wendy.
Hi there, Wendy Thomas, Wildcat Falls. I actually have quite a few small, little things to say. First of all, I just want you to know, I've never been in the path of the pipeline. It's, I live up mid, sort of, Wildcat Falls area. I've always joined the, the train, because it's not fair for my town. I've never, never been directly affected, or threatened by it. The other thing I want to say is, Julie, welcome to the party. You're in for a fun time.
What did I say about the Twilight Zone, do you want an email?
What I try, I went to the open house, and on a table, they had a bunch of maps. And two days before, I had gotten this new map in my email, and I looked at the maps that they had on the table, and they were not this map, they were the outdated maps. And so, one of the blue coats came up to me, and he said, "You know, can I help you on everything?" And I said, "Well, these are outdated." And he said, "What? Yes, but if you had asked me, I would've told you they were outdated." So, I mean, how ridiculous is that? You had to know they were outdated to ask if they were outdated. So, I think it's just indicative of their method of operation, you know? They're putting up as many blocks as possible, they're not being truthful, it's all about money. You're talking about Lucas Meyer, he's the guy with the thing on his face, I don't know what he's doing these days, but he, you know, I have a vote of no confidence for that guy, he's never been, you know, forthright with us, he's never done anything, so, you know, good luck getting a meeting with him, and good luck getting answers out of him.
I'm optimistic, I'm optimistic.
Okay, well, I'm glad you are, I'm not.
I gotta be.
But, yeah, yeah, that's true. One of the questions I asked, and I could not get an answer, this new route, does it increase the mileage and our footage as opposed to the old one?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think it does. Yeah, it's an overall reduction.
But I'm talking about specifically in Merrimack.
Nobody can hear you? You're suggesting that the overall is a decrease in 3.4 miles or so?
For Amherst and Merrimack.
Amherst and Merrimack, yeah, okay, go ahead, Wendy.
All right, well, that's just a question that I couldn't get an answer to. One of my concerns, I am a voluntary special education advocate for the state of New Hampshire, I work with special ed kids, I have tremendous concerns about that pipeline going so close to Thornton's Ferry School. Not so much, there's, from what I understand, the actual pipeline is 1,100 feet from the building, it is not 1,000 feet, which is what the school board requested from the playground. So, I mean, they, again, they played, you know, we didn't specifically ask for the playground.
So, the school committee is gonna have to...
The school board.
The school board.
I believe, yeah.
Will have to make that comment.
Right.
Because they do have this now.
Right, they do, they do. But, but one of my concerns is, and it's been raised tonight, there's tons of granite in that area, gonna be a lot of blasting. If you've got kids that have sensory issues, that's gonna be a horrible school year for them. And so, I think that's something the town needs to be aware of, and maybe for the school year, for the next two years, we need to put those kids in another school.
Then you need to talk to the school board.
The school board, okay.
They're the ones who would make that decision.
That'll be my next one, though. So, you know, it's gonna affect so many people, and, yeah, we've been here. And, and Bill and Nancy, also, earlier you said, you know, "These ladies, these ladies", we got guys on our team, too.
Gentlemen.
These people will do.
My apologies. I can be one of the guys.
Yeah, they can be one of the guys, right, you can be one of the, yeah, okay.
You know, and just my last, my last comment is, this weekend, I happened to be at the Democratic Convention, and I spoke with Senator Shaheen, and, and I said, you know, people in, in southern New Hampshire, in Merrimack, you know, were not feeling like we're being heard, and she said, you know, we got, I go to this meeting, I send representatives to this meeting, I send this, and this, and this. I don't know if you guys remember, remember when we, the flooding out west, and John Lynch went out there, and I don't care what you, I love John Lynch, but...
John Lynch came here when we had the 100-year flooding.
Right, yeah, outstanding, and what he did is, he gave his personal phone number to these people, "You have a problem, you call me." I mean, that's what's missing from our elected officials, we're not getting that from Jean Shaheen, and I love Jean, we're not getting that from Maggie Hassan, I love Maggie, but you know what, we're not being heard, and it's causing a problem, because people that aren't heard are people that are not gonna vote.
But now, to give Shaheen credit, she does have a rep at a lot of the meetings, that is true, and I think she's getting the information. And I do believe Governor Hassan is also getting the information, because of the meeting I went with her. She was very knowledgeable about the arguments, but she still felt disagreed, respectfully disagreed, saying that she feels that the business in the state need...
I know, I know, but you know what?
It's not that they're not here, listening.
Jean and Maggie need to sit in on a scoping meeting, they need to hear about people who are losing property value, they need to see a guy crying because his retirement funds and everything he had planned are gonna be destroyed, they need to hear about, you know, the environment that's gonna be, you know, the towns that don't have the, the fire departments to fight anything, should anything happen, that, you know, they need, they're not getting that stuff.
Yes, they are, they're just choosing not to hear it in balance with what they think.
Yeah, well...
That's my personal opinion.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Okay.
Hi, Deborah Huffman, 60, Amherst Road, just a couple of really fast things, to Julie, welcome, and to a point she made, that nobody wants it. The problem is, there are a lot of people who actually do want it, because they believe that it will reduce their electricity costs and their heating costs. They really believe that, there's a lot of, of information out there that they can read, and it convinces them. And Julie, something you can do, and it's not brain surgery, this is not, it's difficult at first, but you will get used to it, you can read, and you can learn, and you can see what is propaganda and what is reality. And then you can share that information, particularly with our businesses, if you have any connections with our businesses, to make them understand that what they've been led to believe about the benefits of this pipeline really don't add up, they really don't. And people like Governor Hassan, she's an intelligent woman, she has looked at the data...
She has.
And she believes one side.
Right.
I don't, I believe, I have analyzed that same data, and I can't imagine how any intelligent person could look at both sides fairly and decide that this is in our best interest, but she apparently has. So, something you can do is get a little bit informed about this, and write to our congressional delegation, it's true that FERC will make the ultimate decision, but they are influenced by our congressional delegation. That's who you need to comment, the town council's doing all they can, but seriously, the best thing you can do is contact our governor and our congressional delegation. Senator Shaheen is, is perhaps a little bit more open-minded than Governor Hassan about this, she is meeting with us tomorrow, we'll be meeting in person with Senator Shaheen tomorrow morning.
She's really been good having a rep there.
Oh, her, her rep has been fabulous, the best of all of them. Senator Shaheen's rep is the best of all of our congressional delegation reps, she's wonderful. So, so that's what to realize, there are two sides to the story. I happen to think that the pro-pipeline side is wrong, and I think the data stacks against them, but there is an argument, and you have to, you have to understand that, it's not that everybody doesn't want this pipeline, businesses, particularly BAE specifically, believes, I can't understand why, that it's, that the data is on their side. So, understand that, understand the data, and, and try to argue sensibly with the data. That's all I can say.
Any other?
Paul? If you are gonna write to Senator Shaheen's office, her representative said today, write to the Manchester office, not the Washington office. The Manchester office, she gets the information a lot quicker, she's keeping a file for Senator Shaheen, so if you wanna write to Senator Shaheen's office, please write to the Manchester office, and they'll take it and move that forward, that's what the representative said today. And the other thing that the representative said today, I believe, we're the only delegation that hasn't come out pro or against the pipeline in the area. New York has, Massachusetts has, Maine, I think, is also talking about it, but New Hampshire, the delegation has not come out for or against the pipeline.
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive, I just wanna comment on what came up with Julie, I think the signs that you used around town earlier is a wonderful idea, and I just wanted to clarify one thing, the meeting that you're proposing, is that gonna be open to the public?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
That was made clear.
Yeah, I thought I heard it, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's one of the things that gives them pause.
Yes.
Yeah. And, yeah, tell everybody, I mean, I've, I've started the fire in my neighborhood, I've got some people, but it takes a while, and I, too, this was not in my backyard until...
And even those people who are directly infected, don't worry about it.
It's still not in my backyard, but it's across the street now, so...
It's further across the street.
No, it wasn't gonna even be there, originally.
But even people who are directly affected, they're not worried about it?
Well, and I think a lot of people, it, it is a hard process to come up to speed, it's a little intimidating the first time you sit here and you hear all the abbreviations, but there are people out here willing to educate you.
Hi, Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbar, I thought I'd get a chance to finish this mint in my mouth before I came up here, so forgive me. So, a couple of things, you were talking about setting a fire for your neighborhood, and one of my favorite songs starts with a quote, "When there's nothing left to burn, you have to set yourself on fire." So, I think with the last few weeks coming up to, you know, submit to FERC, I think we really need to power up, and we need to set ourselves on fire, and we need to really get letters and stuff out. So, I think to all the people at home that are watching this, a couple of things that you can do, we went to a movie in Wilton, a really good movie called End of the Line, it is online, it's about the Bluegrass Pipeline that was down in Kentucky, it's one of the few pipelines that actually didn't get approved by FERC, which is pretty amazing. They were transporting something a little bit different, they were transporting, it's a byproduct, I think it's liquid, I can't remember what it's called, it's actually, it's a byproduct of fracking that's used to make plastic, and they actually managed not to get this pipeline approved, which was good. So, it can be done, we just need to do it. The New Hampshire Pipeline Awareness Group was there, after the movie, they had some really good stuff to say, one of the things that they said was, that it would be great to get Annie Custer to the Ringe FERC scoping meeting, and have her publicly come out against the pipeline, because we haven't had any of our, our delegates come out yet, and we need them to do that. So, Annie Custer is our best bet, because she is on our side, they're all afraid, they're afraid of the businesses, you know? So, anyway, that's one thing that can be done, another thing that kinda ticked me off was when we were at the Amherst meeting, they, blah, 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 here's this, I noticed, it's like, how close is it to the Home Hospice, 400 feet? How close is it to Thornton's Ferry School, that's an elementary school there, that's 1,100 feet, which they were patting themselves on the back, because they were told to stay 1,100, they were told to stay 1,000 feet away from the school board. So, when we went to the open house, this was Barry Duff, Kinder Morgan, something or other, project manager, when we went to the open house, I found my good friend Barry, and I said, "So, Barry," I said, "Is it 1,100 feet to the building, or is it 1,100 feet to the property edge?" He said, "It's 1,100 feet to the corner of the building." I said, "So, you do realize that there's 500-plus kids that are on the upper playground, which is now probably 900 feet, and they're on that playground for, you know, five days a week?" And he said, "That doesn't matter, we're putting, we're submitting it as is." So, that's how much they care. I said, "You also realize that the Home Hospice is the last thing these dying people are gonna see, is you putting in a pipeline, they don't care." So, anyway, these are just some of the, oh, the other thing that I asked Barry Duff, because at that point, you know, me, I get emotional, and I said, "Don't you care, have you ever even walked this, this, have you seen this, do you even know where this pipeline's going?" And he said, "Yes, I've been in that area many times, I've seen it, I've walked it." So, I don't know how he's walking it, if he's not supposed to be on our property without you guys there. Or else he's just full of baloney, because...
Well, if anybody has any delusions about them honoring anything about...
The restrictions.
Going across our property, okay? It's public property, people are on it every day.
They just can't serve it.
They just can't do the things that they wanna, supposedly, they can't do the things that they wanna do on it, but that doesn't preclude them from walking on it. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, and, and, you know, they, I've, you know, I'm, I'm sure that somebody's been on it, more than once.
Oh, I'm sure they have, because in this movie that we saw, they had signs posted all over the place for private property, and they had cameras posted, and one of the things that showed up on camera was a guy going to the bathroom, so, yeah.
Well, he probably saw the camera and decided he was gonna give them a good show.
He was front and center, so I'm thinking, probably, yes. So, that just goes to show the level of respect that, that we get, for what we give up, so, you know, liberty and justice for all, unless you're in the line for a pipeline property.
Yeah, well, the Penachuk property is posted, there's no trespassing, okay? Yet I see trucks down there all the time, because it's hunting season, and so, you know, they, they don't even enforce that, so, anyway.
Okay, we're also gonna be hearing from Deb, you're prepared to discuss the metering?
Joe, did you want to...
Would you rather not?
I didn't have a chance to read it, I don't know if anyone else had a chance to read it, I don't feel like I was there.
Becky was gonna give you a call back, to tell, get you know.
Yeah, I thought...
I did send it out early to people, I guess there was some problem, but this is the finished copy.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear back from Becky.
And it was reviewed by the attorney, just to let you know.
It, yeah.
Okay, we can table it if you'd like.
It's really up to you guys, I mean, I, I volunteered to help, I made the first draft, I did a bunch of research, and got a lot of blah, blah, blah.
Now, this needs to be put in prior to the October 16th.
That's the big key, is before the 16th, it doesn't matter if you do it tonight, if people haven't seen it.
That's fine with me, would everyone like to table this until the 8th?
We, we could do that, I, I read through it, and although it has a ton of information, I figured the more information you threw at 'em, the better off you were, I think you mentioned it at one of our past meetings, is you ask for everything you could possibly ask for, and get whatever they give you, and so...
That's the point, that's right.
I really have no problem at all with us sending this in, because it just...
I don't either.
It asks for everything you could possibly ask for.
It was everything I could find in anybody else's letters that they asked for in relation to a meter station, you know, and I just threw it all in there, and phrase was discussed, I hadn't, I haven't seen what Joanna had, your attorney added some things, apparently, I think.
Did she, I don't know.
But whatever, the point is, we just, we have to protect ourselves as best we can.
We're gonna authorize the town manager to sign the letter and forward it.
If nothing else, there's things they can do, there's noise mitigation, there's noise barriers, there's all kinds of things, they won't give us any of it.
Authorize the town manager to sign the letter and forward it.
So, Tom Mahon is making a motion...
Second.
To authorize the town manager, it's one, very well-written, it's been reviewed by the town council, I'm sorry, the attorney.
SEO, not CIL.
And, and Tom Mahon, he added some comments there.
Okay, seconded by Tom Keenig. Okay, I realize some of you may be abstaining.
And I, well, I can support it, if, if I know that...
I've reviewed it.
That you reviewed it, Tom's reviewed it, and the attorney, I don't have a problem with it, I just, the edited version that I got this afternoon, I printed it and tried to read it, and I just couldn't make heads or tails of it.
Right.
So, just to throw it out there, I have not, I read parts of it, but I wasn't really sure what was Joanna, what was being crossed out, what was added, so...
Because my first email, apparently...
If you've read it, and, and I, I mean, I agree with Tom, the more information you If you've read it, and I, I agree with Tom, the more information you throw at him, the better. So if you're all comfortable with it, I don't have a problem.
And Tom Mahon, did your comments get included in here? Because I know you had a few comments to add, and I don't know. I haven't seen it.
I'm trying to look for them, but I'm not going to-
Well, it's up to you.
I'm not going to worry about it, because at some point, they're going to have to do it anyway.
Okay. Everybody willing to take a vote?
I can't vote for something that I haven't read.
Then you can abstain, or I know.
Which is what I'd like to do, but, I mean, and we're moving along so nicely, I don't want to put a pause button on, but if you could give me just the five minutes.
Why is there, I mean, why is there a rush? We got to October 16th. We've got a meeting on the 8th. Why is there a rush? I mean, I haven't read the letter. I may have questions, and I don't want to waste people's-
Okay, yeah, they're in here.
I don't want to waste people's time.
Saying my stuff was in there. And I hear their-
It was in there.
And I hear their concerns. So, you know, it's okay for me if you want to vote it down.
But you've made a motion. All right, let's, Paul? Okay. Why don't we take five? And everyone has had time to read the proposed letter to FERC related to the metering station. And I would like to publicly thank Deb Huffman for all her work in helping to devise this letter. I think it's wonderful. We shall have an outstanding motion from Tom Mahon, seconded by Tom Kinnick. And we'll have some discussion now that people have had time to read it. Discussion. Bill?
It's more of a question for Deb, if she's willing to entertain a question.
You have to kind of come up here if need be.
Not my letter anymore. It's your letter now. I'm just the researcher. That's all.
This is Deb Huffman, just for minutes.
Deb Huffman, 60 Emmerst Road.
Did you look at the new Ipswich letter to FERC as it relates to the proposed metering station with them and rely on that as a template? And also looked at it for any ancillary information that could be gleaned that could be beneficial to us?
I don't recall right now. This was several weeks ago. Remember, we were supposed to do this two weeks ago, and I'd given, so this is several weeks ago now. I did a lot of research. I don't believe New Ipswich-
Has a metering?
No, no. They don't have a meter station. They have a compressor station.
A compressor station.
So I'm sure that they, you know, have written a letter. I don't recall if that was one of my sources or not, or when they did a letter. Remember, I did this at least three or so weeks ago, so I don't remember when they would have done one.
The Clydesdales was a nice touch.
Thank you. Well, it's true. They're sensitive animals, sensitive ears.
It's extremely true.
Veterinary hospital right next door. They have sensitive ears.
I don't disagree with you. It is, it's a good point because Anheuser-Busch's branding relies on the Clydesdales. Everything that they do is about the Clydesdales. So I think that amplifies the business, the business piece, the economic development piece. Question for the chair.
Yes.
When did Joanna see this, and when did Joanna?
She returned it yesterday. That's what those edits were. She saw it this past week. She just did it yesterday or today?
She originally, yeah, she originally saw it over two weeks ago because we had to postpone this item from two weeks ago's agenda because Joanna had not gotten back to Eileen as of that day. So Eileen said, "Let's just postpone this." So Joanna had seen it more than two weeks ago.
She feels the content is fine. She's made some grammatical font kind of-
And so has someone incorporated those into this? Okay, so that's all been done.
Yeah, this is the final. In fact, this crap is-
She's an attorney. I mean, this wasn't written by an attorney, so, you know, so that's what attorneys do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
It's a great letter. Thank you, Deb.
Oh, absolutely. I apologize, Deb. It is an excellent letter. Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 600. Okay, minutes. I'm going to request that we table the minutes.
Move to table. The July 23 Town Council Retreat Work Session Minutes.
Yep. Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mahon. Do you understand why?
No.
They're very poorly written. A lot of revisions need to be made. There are inaccuracies.
Thank you. Okay, because I had them all marked up. Thank you.
A lot of inaccuracies. I would like, I would like to request that Town Council send those revisions or questions to Eileen. Okay? All those in favor of tabling these minutes say aye.
Aye.
600. Okay, minutes from September 3rd.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, September 3, 2015, special Town Council meeting minutes as presented, unless people found errors.
Okay, a motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Roth House.
There you go. I like it.
I'm going like this, what did it say?
Where's the rope? You're going to pull the rope.
Okay, corrections. Bill, go for it.
I didn't see any. That's why-
You didn't see any, perfect.
I didn't.
Yes, Jody.
Call the question.
Quick.
Page 2 of 12, line 34. How do you spell hurdle?
H U R D L A.
Okay, that needs to be corrected. Page, I normally tab the bottom of these, and I didn't. I'm sorry.
I hope that's how you spell it.
Page 10 of 12, line 44, commented as missing the T. Page 11 of 12, line 24, opinions, there just needs to be a space between opinions and or.
Yep.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Excellent. Yes, Tom Mahon?
Page 5 of 12, fifth paragraph, line 1, actually, line 24, sorry. It says intransients. It should be intransigence.
Yep.
That's it.
Any other suggestions?
I got one.
Yes, Tom Kinnick?
And this is getting nitpicky, but on page 2, line 20, says Counselor Dwyer. It probably ought to be part of line 22, like all of the other paragraphs that begin with the name of the person speaking. It should just be associated rather than looking like a heading title for Counselor Dwyer.
Formatting issue.
Formatting, yes.
20 and 22 ought to be merged.
Dan probably called ahead of time so he could have a special line that that would stick out, so.
He was really impressive with that.
Absolutely.
Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Roth House. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? 600. Comments from the press. Comments from the public.
Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbar. Who was that guy? He was writing down everything that Kinda Morgan would want to know because I was watching what he was writing.
It was a public meeting.
He might have been. It's a public meeting, didn't he?
Huh?
We, I asked him who he was. I asked him if he was from the press. I asked him if he was from Kinda Morgan. I asked him, Carol asked him if he was from Merrimack. He's like, no. And then he goes to me, "Are you accusing me of something?"
He has every right to be here.
He has every right to be here.
You got funky socks on. That's all.
That was the best part about him.
That matched the bowtie.
That was the best part about him. Anyway, so I guess my message is, the spies are here, so.
Well, we know that. Who cares? It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, and you can view this.
Technically, they're not spies. They're-
They're attendees. That's right.
You need to.
Okay, comments from the council. Yes, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be brief. This Saturday, this is going to be very busy in the town of Merrimack. We've got Erica's 5K on Saturday morning. For more information, erakasrun.com. It's also Art in the Park and the Merrimack Rocks event, so I'd encourage the members of the general public that Saturday, Saturday's supposed to be a decent day. So I hope you get out and take advantage with some of the activities that are going on in town. Meet some of your friends, your neighbors, that kind of thing. It's really a great opportunity to connect. And obviously, the Merrimack Rocks event is going to be, is really, it's going to be a great time, great event, and I'm looking forward to it. The other comment I actually saw on, was posted on Facebook by the Merrimack Police Department. They are now offering a dedicated surveillance area for people, two parking spaces, video monitor 24/7. If they have to do a child custody switch between two parents, if you've got somebody that's buying something like on eBay, and they don't know where, they're not sure whether it's a good person or a bad person. They can go to the Merrimack Police Station, park in these designated areas, and be able to conduct their transaction. And I really thought that was a good idea.
Who's got the raffle for the first drug deal?
The first what?
Drug deal. I honestly don't know, but-
I'm glad you made that public with the good idea that was.
I would probably say in response to Counselor Mahon's comment is, I imagine there might be some candidates for Darwin Award. You know, should they try to do something like that?
I rest my case.
Thank you very much. So, you know, I just looked at it as another example of the chief in the Merrimack Police Department-
Being creative.
-being creative, emphasizing community policing and giving people choices in the community to do things safely with what they need to do. So I thought that was a great idea. Lastly, this morning, out in Greater Woods, now that we're getting into the fall season, just wanted to remind people that, you know, it's fall season, great opportunity to be taking advantage of Greater Woods, Wildcat Falls, Horse Hill Nature Preserve, and Wasserman Park. Just a great opportunity to get out and enjoy the woods. And along those lines, Mama Bear and Three Cubs were on Joppa Road last night. So if you're out in the woods, make sure you're loud and proud so that you scare away any potential predators.
And wear your orange. It's hunting season.
That's right. Wear your orange. That's correct. So, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Jody?
I just wanted to share, and the wear your orange is definitely, it is, people get caught unaware when they find hunters out there. The Conservation Commission, our last meeting, just a couple of things that I thought that the council might be interested in. We, on September 12, there was a meeting for anyone who was interested, town employees and the Town Council were invited. I could not go because I'm still in this boot. I couldn't walk. But what we did was, we had a wetland delineation study done on Horse Hill Nature Preserve because we are hoping to increase the size of the parking lot. There is never enough parking off the Amherst Street entrance into Horse Hill Nature Preserve. So we had a wetland delineation report, which I have, if anybody's interested in a copy of the report. And then she did some wetland delineation training, which was really helpful to people who are involved with conservation work and some people who are just curious. But we discovered that the wetlands actually were further away from the parking lot than we had originally suspected. So increasing the size of the parking lot is not going to be an issue as far as wetlands go. So we're hoping to move forward with that. The other thing that I wanted to let the Town Council know was our environmental impact studies. We're expecting our expert to be present at our next Conservation Commission meeting and present the final reports regarding all the properties that he studied, which may, yeah, may or may not. Although I think this new root is still going through Gilmore Forest, is it not?
No.
No.
The new root isn't. Okay. One of the roots was-
It's going through, it's going through the parcel they bought a couple of years ago-
Okay.
On, right at the, right behind Penachuk Square.
Okay. Anyway, so we'll have that information for you after the next Conservation Commission meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody. Anyone else?
Are we done? I just want to point out, not to take away from Erica's Run, but there's also the Walk to End Alzheimer's this weekend up in Manchester. And for those of us that experienced Alzheimer's firsthand and losing a loved one, that's an important event as well. So if anybody's looking to come out there and join us in Manchester instead of running in Merrimack, we'd look forward to the support there as well.
Anyone else? Okay, I will-
Motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mahon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brownlee, 600. Good night.